Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the committee on the whole meeting on Tuesday, March tenth, at six thirty eight p.m. and ask for all.
Mr. Gruski?
Here.
Ms. Goddard?
Here.
Mr. Baron?
Here.
Mr. Isley?
Yep.
Mr. Barteri?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here. And now, unless there are any visitors coming.
No.
Okay. Seeing that, I will move for approval of the minutes of February eighteenth, twenty twenty, and ask over seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Turn it over to Dr. Brad.
Thank you. I'm going to make a switch in the item and put the staffing, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one staffing recommendation first. So please pay attention to what I'm about to say. Bringing forth this item is Mr. Greg Johnson and Dr. Roxanna Sam. Hands up today.
All right.
All right.
Congratulations.
Where's the word? It's testicle.
As you know, each March, we bring forth the administration provides the board with the staffing recommendations for the upcoming school year, expressed as full-time equivalencies or FTEs. As a reminder, one point oh FTE represents one full-time position. The items we'll be bringing forth today provide service to our students. The instructional, which is classroom positions, instructional support, non-classroom positions, and non-instructional support positions will be brought forward today. At the conclusion of the presentation, the recommendation is to move the positions... Oh, at the... You'll see at the end of the presentation, to move the position of the associate data analysis analyst forward at the regular board meeting on March the nineteenth, twenty twenty. The rest of this presentation is for information only.
And you have your items, breathing. As usual, we divide our staffing recommendations into three parts. First, we have faculty recommendations, which are divided into classroom positions and instructional support positions that are not in the classroom. We, last year, had two hundred twenty-one point one FTE for the classroom and fifty-one point two FTE for instructional support. And while we've gone up in some areas, we've gone down in other areas, so overall, we're remaining completely flat. Now, I'll ask Mr. Johnson to conduct a little of the sectioning process that we do once we complete registration and receive all of the board's request.
Yeah, basically, just the way I'm gonna share it now is something by what Roxanna has already shared, that what you really see with our staffing for this year is a shift between our various positions. We're able to accomplish that by being very strict, keeping to our recommended class sizes that we have in place, and also, and by that, I mean making sure that our class sizes are very close to that level, which is depending on what class is, in the mid to high twenties. And also being very careful about making sure that where needed, we close sessions, right? We close electives if we don't have enough students enrolled in them. And that's a really natural thing for a school to do. We have talked about making plans for a natural cycle for some of these electives, the idea being that we have, you know, a variety of electives that aren't able to run next year. And as a result of those classes not running, they would be a priority next year, right? So you can kind of get your electives to work in this every other year's cycle. And with that said, we were also able to provide some FTE next year in a few priority areas for us that we designated out of our strategic plan. And that includes additional FTE for student supports, which we've talked about in previous conversations with the board, and also a little bit of extra FTE for our special education department as well, for their needs. But again, that's all within the existing two twenty-two point one FTE that was approved by the board.
And then, moving on to the non-instructional support positions, we again remain flat to the majority of all our positions. You know, we have positions that are represented by various unions, classified professionals, buildings and grounds, also campus safety. So there's no change in FTE in those areas. The non-affiliated group is really no change in FTE, but we have previously communicated to you there are structuring that was done in buildings and grounds, and we eliminated was the retirement of one of the positions, which was facilities engineer, that having communicated that the savings are going to be a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. However, having gone through the staffing needs and specifically, we've had a very stringent process where everybody who has additional FTE needs has to fill out a form explaining the rationale for the position. So we received such a request from Educational Technology, and the request is for associate data analyst. That position was determined to be needed due to the increase on the time and effort demands on data systems. So that is due to some changes in legislation, but also to the increased workload. So we are requesting adding the position of associate data analyst, moving nonadditional costs, and will, depending on how the position will be staffed, it will be savings of at least forty-three thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars remaining, but hopefully it will be more. In addition, we also, through attrition, have been filled a part-time position in the bookstore, so savings are twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's all of all of the staffing recommendations. If you have any questions.
Yeah, I just have a simple one. There's a title on the FTE, and one part it says two-two-two point one, and the other is two-two-one point one, which is actually accurate, the two-two-two.
Correct.
Okay. That's all. Just curious, I knew one of them had to rewrite one, I didn't know which.
Yeah, sorry for the error. Two-twenty-two point one. That was what was approved in your role.
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you. So I guess I asked a number of poorly worded questions, but one of them was, what's the anticipated student count for next year versus this year versus maybe two years forward?
Yeah, off the top of my head, off the top of my head, I'm not exactly sure, but it's relatively flat, our student enrollment for next few years. Yeah, I can go back and get what those projections are. We, at the very beginning of this process, we took a look at projected moments. Cindy actually brought in to a budget retreat that we had, based off of those, we said, okay, good, we think it might be reasonable to expect a flat FTE moving forward. And we had to go through this process to see if that actually would bear into existence and it has, so. Yeah, we can get that point, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a report out there someplace, that's kind of, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, so you're asking the stuff that you got a forecast by every once in a while.
Actually, we do a consultant to handle community, do a projection.
The last demographers report, I don't have the numbers in front of me. Okay, and Cindy, it was less than sixty K, it wasn't even enough to make, to change a class size.
Sixty-six.
Right, something like that for the upcoming year. And then I think the demographer predicted a decline the year after that. But we have the report, we can send it to the board.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question about the data analyst position and that person reporting to the technology department, and how, given some of the, I guess, requirements of that position in terms of data analysis, how is that going to work with the data person?
Yeah, so organizationally, the reporting structure is here, but I'm glad you brought that up because that really is the strongest argument that I see in my world, right, for why this position is being formed and moving forward. So we see this as a key contributor, a key collaborator with the general analytics position, excuse me, Kristen McKinnon, that's in your organization. So Chris can speak to this a little bit more thoroughly, but this allows us to create a team of data analysis in the school in a broader way than we've had before. That's part of the impetus for this Christian admin.
Yeah, and also increases our ability to do the mechanics that are necessary behind the scene in order to make the platforms that we're seeing, for instance, in the public dashboard, and get those internally focused to groups so that they can make data-driven decisions. That's a real core component of this, but it does require somebody who's got both an understanding of data analysis, but also the mechanics that are involved in the platforms we're using to make these successful.
So, thank you. I don't have to understand all the mechanics to know what's gonna happen. I... Is this going to be enough in terms of the data dashboard, the data needs that we have? This per, one person, sounds like they will be splitting their, I don't know how it's going to work.
Right, we're trying metaphorically.
Yeah, and we're looking, we would like more.
Well, I mean, I understand, and I think it's great getting someone that has, to have their expertise in both areas. I guess I was a little confused at first, given what some of the rationale for the data needs that that person would be reporting to technology, so.
Yeah, and that's been traditional, right? I came up through the data systems department as well. That's always been under the umbrella of technology, data processing, when it was more to the data systems, was adopted into that department. The, this position in particular is in support of the person that is very attuned to doing this, which is our data analyst. So we're looking to free up some of the basic transactional stuff, the closing tickets, the one-off reports, things like that, could be handled by the associate data analyst, so the data analyst can go into, get into the more immediate topics that they need to get into in order to do the work that we're trying to move forward.
So one last question. Right now, is Kristen McKinnon a department of one?
Well, she has our testing specialist, and I don't have her. So I suppose technically a department of two, in that, in that narrow sense. I mean, yeah, she really is, but she works closely with my entire teaching learning team, so there's, there's.
But she, when it comes to like information for the data dashboard, the configuration and the data for the Illinois State Report Card as well, there's a collaborative effort, is there not, between what Kristen will be doing in the ET department?
Absolutely, very much so. Absolutely. Yeah.
You have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, Greg. I'm going at forty-four. The next item is the presentation of the program evaluation for IDEA eight grants and the division of rehabilitation services. Coming forth with this item is Dr. Glenn Walker-Fall, Dr. Kennedy Dixon, Mr. Lee Williams. Jason, are you drawing now? Okay.
He's especially, come on, Jason.
This presentation is presented for information only. It is in compliance with strategic plan priorities to more policies to the scope of voice.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, dear. Go to the actual class. You good?
Yep.
We gotta go to the class. All right. Just to start off, I'd like to thank the various staff members who helped collaborate to make this program evaluation possible. Dr. Kennedy Dixon on PowerPoint, Mr. Lee Williams, who is our transition specialist, Mr. John Smith, who is really experienced behind our community collars and career collars, Mrs. Meryl DeVeau, who's our administrative assistant, who we could not survive one day, especially without her, and then, of course, myself. Just to go into a lot of, a little more information about our special ed department, because we do have some of the board members that may not be aware of what great things we do here in our special ed department. The mission, this was actually compiled by our teachers, our paraprofessionals, and this is truly what we is definitely requiring. Our goal is to educate, support, and encourage all students to reach their full social and emotional potential through rigorous activity and social-emotional curriculum that prepares them for a productive future. Basically, that is how we're using a lot of the money from our IDEA grant and our DRS grant to make sure that they are included in all aspects of the school. And this is the vision here, again, words striving for excellence in education and learning. Program overview, this is just a general overview of some of the various programs in our special ed department. These are the various categories that IDEA will actually finance for lack of the term, and we have children in all of these areas as far as characteristics of disabilities. These are some of the services that we actually offer for our students here. And again, some of this is information you know, but some you may not. And then this is the actual classrooms, the next one. The actual programs that we have here, and going from the least restrictive, starting off the general ed with all accommodations and services, to the more restrictive, which is our residential placement. So you can just look at that. You can go to the learning development program. This is for students who have diagnosed with a specific learning disability. This is where many of our classrooms are co-tapped throughout the building in a wide variety of classes, from reading to math to history to English, we have not restructured in those areas in our special ed classrooms. Emotional development program. Thanks to the board, we implemented a new program, I want to say in twenty sixteen. It's called our STAR program. It's basically a school infusion program for students with emotional disabilities who have a hard time just getting into the building. In addition to that, we have the social-emotional development program, S E D. Again, this is a self-contained program that houses students with significant emotional concerns, and again, the curriculum here is the general ed curriculum. And then our RISE program, and the students came up with that name themselves because it was a little more raccoon type name. Again, this is just reinventing student's education, and again, it's trying to provide support and structure for adolescents who struggle with social and emotional challenges, which interferes with their academic progress. And our TEAM program, this is a program for students with more intellectual as well as physical disabilities, it's a multitude, multitude of disabilities, and some of them are vested there. And again, the focus of the program there is recreational skills and daily living activities. Okay? And this is our site program. This is the actual program that is housed at the Woodford Community Center, and it's a community-based transition education program for students ages eighteen to twenty-one. And then off-campus program, we do have quite a few students, for whatever reason, are not successful in the building here, in classes here, and they are tuitioned off-campus. They are still a part of the Woodford High School students, but again, there's usually their needs are a little bit more than we are able to accommodate, and we also do have students who actually go to even more restrictive through placement than that is a residential placement. I know I gave you quite a bit of information. If you have questions, right, would be anything that I thus far said before I proceed. I can keep going, I know it's a crazy.
I just have a general question, because I don't know as a board member. So do we, do we embed social-emotional learning across the board in all classrooms?
In our special ed classrooms.
No, not in special ed, just in general.
That's part of our instructional coaches that do that.
Okay, so we're moving to that, so that we have instructional coaches that are focusing.
That do the SEL piece as well, and then there's the committee of work, committee that's also working on SEL.
This is our actual special ed facility, or faculty here this school year, as far as the number of teachers, program chairs, who are psychologists, psychologists, behavior interventionists, assistive technology, the DRS transition specialists, the DRS employment specialists, administrative assistants, secretaries, records managers, paraprofessionals, school social workers. Again, we also have part-time contractor staff giving us support as well, and those are obvious as well. And again, a lot of the programs that we run, the IDEA funds and the DRS funds supplement these programs.
I have a question. Sure. On the part-time contractual stuff?
Yes.
I'm guessing that this is just within your special education department, those pieces, that it's not like, there's not one social worker for everybody? This is just one part-time for your, this, one of those specific programs?
The part-time contractor staff is individuals that we contract out to oftentimes if we're overflowing in evaluations or meetings, those are the people that will fill that need. So it's not just one program, it's wherever the need is.
So you have, but you have four full-time social workers, and that's in addition to the other five that sit on the P S S.
Right, the other five on the P S S. Sitting on the general ed side, and we have actually four full-time school social workers, that's it.
I missed it before.
No, no problem. No question, yes, you have. Okay. And then these are all of the related services that we provide in our special ed program. Physical therapy, occupational speech, music therapy is something that we implemented as part of the IDEA grant, and it has been very instrumental. We started music therapy in our TEAM program, and it was such a good success, we moved it on to our site program as well as our S E D program. It really works well. Social work, actual counseling, behavior therapy, we brought that back again with our IDEA grant as well, psychological services, paraprofessional support. Quite a bit of the money that we spend on salaries for our paraprofessionals will come out of the IDEA grant, and that pays for that transition services such as DRS, that comes through as a related service, assistive technology, healthcare services, some of our students actually have long-term nurses, so again, that comes out of the IDEA grant. Transportation is a related service as well for some of our students. The vision and hearing itinerary services, that also comes out of the IDEA grant, pays for that. Any questions on any of that, if you go back, just want to make sure. The Department of, Department of Rehabilitation Services, Mr. Williams will kind of give you an idea of what he does. Mr. William Slasher was our employment specialist initially, was promoted to our transition specialist, and then retired a new employment specialist this four years ago. And he is such an asset to our special ed department. He started off as a actual professional and his work has played out, so he's really happy and proud of it.
All right, well, welcome, and good evening to those of you I have not met prior. As Dr. Quoz has shared, I am a transition specialist, Lee Williams, first year as the transition specialist, so needless to say, this has been a transitional year for myself as well, as well as with students. But to give a general idea of transition services here at Oak Harbor Woodford High School, pertaining to DHS, DRS services, so DHS stands for the Department of Human Services. DRS is a division of DHS, Department of Rehabilitation Services, and the goal here with our students is to provide services for our students to help them understand what transition is first and foremost, and then second, to provide those services to assist them. Those services generally tend to involve post-secondary option explorations, so college, trade school, and even some other educational pursuits that students and parents are interested in. Our big one here is employment, so our students oftentimes, they see me and others that work closely with me as the job people. We assist students with finding employment in the community. The thing about that with DRS is that in order for us to provide that service, DRS requires us to have at least nineteen outcomes a year. Among that nineteen, among that nineteen outcomes, DRS provides funds for Oak Harbor Woodford High School based on those outcomes that we reach. To give an example of how we get to those outcomes, or the amount of time it takes to get to those outcomes, we are currently in March, we currently have fourteen outcomes, we need nineteen, of course, by July first, and we definitely, yeah, we definitely have three on the docket for April, and then I see others coming as well. So employment is a big thing for us as far as our students are concerned, and parents as well within the community, and then the independent living portion of what we do. So here at the high school, I help students prepare core adult services for DRS. And what that means is I am their high school counselor, so through grades nine through twelve, I would assist them in preparing for adult services if they choose to continue those adult services once they graduate from high school. How that happens is I forward their file to the adult counselor, which is a Westchester. She was in our building in fact today to meet with some of our seniors to discuss some options once they graduate. But again, the whole idea is to provide them options, and particularly, it must be students with disabilities to receive services that the state offers based on their criteria. To add to that, we, we focus on students with disabilities, but it's inevitable that we reach out to all students within our student body in order to provide these services. An example of that was our job fair that we had two weeks ago. Of course, all students were welcome to show up at our job fair, and again, all students benefit from the activities that we bring into our department. And I kind of ran over some of this, but support after high school, so for students that have files open as a high school student, we forward their files to the adult office. What we also do is for students that do not have a file as a senior, because some students actually have not obtained a file once they got to senior year for various reasons, and we're actually working on that. As I've stepped into this role this year, I've realized that we have to make sure that we reach students before senior year. So those students that we're working on reaching for senior year, they can also open up a file with me, and then I forward it to the adult office. And again, it's our post-secondary training assistance determined on an individual basis, based on the state's set of criteria. When we say individual basis, that is something that makes a lot of people nervous when we say that, because they tend to think that there's a criteria that matches all students. However, the state looks at it in the sense of, we look at the individual case and see, we see what the student needs, and then we provide services based on that. So to complete that, students in any special education program or with a 504 plan can apply for services. So this also applies to students with 504 plans. For students who do not have files open in our high school, a referral can be made during their last semester of high school to local office, which is a Westchester for those secondary services. So again, this is an ongoing support for our students. Once they connect with me here within the high school, I am their liaison to their adult services, which oftentimes goes to the age of twenty-two or beyond in some severe cases.
All right, the overall objective of this program evaluation was really just to find out more about, go to the next, just, in the next, just find out more about the intricacies of the actual grant itself. There is quite a bit, IDEA I was very familiar with because I can do it. IDA, I was very familiar with because I've been doing that numerous years. DRS, I was not as familiar with, and me has really stepped up this year with the new position to become, as you can tell, very knowledgeable about the DRS grants and the different things that go into making sure that we are in compliance with the DRS grant. I have been involved with numerous meetings this year and found out a great deal, and found out even more things that we can pursue in the future to better serve our families as far as post-secondary funds. The goals of this evaluation, keep going. And Kenny was very instrumental in helping me work on this part of the grant. Again, we had special ed done a couple of years back, I want to say twenty fifteen, we had Doctors Thomas and Doctors Hatchet, Hatchet, who are two superintendents slash special ed directors, and they came in and actually audited our special ed department. And they came up with areas that they thought we should really focus more on in our department. So again, that's where the majority of the monies have been spent with our IDA grant and our DRS grants. And the areas that they felt that we needed to focus on was number one, transition, and number two, to leave up our S E D supports for our students, because they saw that this was the trend that was coming, not just for Old Park, but San Jose and the nation, that there were more students with social emotional concerns. So those were the areas, and that's where the majority of our money has been spent. So what we did was just for the purpose of this report, show you some of that information. You can see the, you can go back to the allocations, Kenny, right there. How much money we've gotten since twenty fifteen for the grant from the state. You can see that each year it has increased. I was a little bit concerned when the funding change could say that we would not be receiving as much, but we have been able to, for whatever reason, and I'm glad, keep receiving as much money. And again, it goes directly to support our special ed students, students for, and just various programs and things that we do. We did mention several of those. As far as the DRS staff grant, that grant specifically plays, pays for our employment specialists and the various activities that the DRS employment specialist does. For example, they deal with helping students with resume writing, providing uniforms for our site students who work in the hospital program, they supply work shoes for them, and all of that comes out of that staff grant. And as you can see, that has increased, and again, that's because we met more outcomes than normal. We really went overboard last year, we're trying to meet those requirements. And then the actual transition grant, which pays for the transition specialist activities, that has paid pretty stable through the years. But again, that's a good thing, we haven't lost any monies, because we try to make sure we meet the outcomes. And DRS has been very collaborative with us. If it looks like we're not meeting, they give us a call and they'll come out, what can we do? Just very supportive, and they really like Old Park. Our kids are good kids, and I think it makes them look good, when we have kids who are doing well as far as being employed, and some of the very progressive things that we have done, such as the community college, the career college. They're not doing that at every school, so they.
Well, to add to that, actually, I, yeah, I have been told that we are actually the highest performing district in the Western suburbs, so that contributes to the DRS liking us definitely, and then that trickles down to our students and folks.
When you talk about outcomes, isn't it a percentage of kids placed in certain situations? I mean, what, what, what specific types of outcomes are they looking for in the grant?
So the employment outcomes, we happen to have nineteen students or more that are employed for at least sixty days and at least two hundred and forty hours. So once they pass that threshold of sixty days of employment and two hundred and forty hours, then we met an outcome.
And we celebrate when they do. And sometimes they don't make it, and they come so close, but that's reality too. And the good thing again is these are not just skills that they are learning here in the high school, these are lifelong skills. And especially, San Jose for our special ed students, the unemployment, unemployment rates are just abysmal. So if anything that we can do to give them some lifelong skills to help them is wonderful. Our staff is just phenomenal in keeping us abreast of everything that we should know. I don't know, we're moving along quickly. I'm sorry, this is my last presentation maybe. But anyway.
Four thousand one, yes.
So Amy has a total of course, she's going out in grandness, and I'm just. Well, you can group. Again, just to give you some special ed data, you can see the on-campus enrollment each year has increased. And I did speak a little bit about why that was and some of the questions. But we do see, and again, I've been here now fourteen years, and when I started, we were less than five hundred, or not even five hundred kids. So you can see over the fourteen years how much we've increased to six forty-nine now. I just wanted to show you that and then show you the DRS enrollment. And it fluctuates, I mean, very often, that is a position that generates growth. And it's tied to the individual who usually is in those jobs, I've seen that so many.
Yeah, so we're, actually, we have eighty, approximately eighty students registered for DRS services currently. But that number between now and August is getting a rise to over one fifty, because we've reached out to our sophomore parents and signed their students up, and they are signing their students up. So those numbers are rising as we speak.
And that was due to a collaboration, again, with DRS, they called and said, your numbers are low, what can we do? And they came out and we brainstormed, we sat at the table for hours, and we came up with this great idea, let's reach out to sophomore parents and we put it in place, and we got correspondence out, and we're actually getting parents, again, actually responding, which is, which is wonderful. Okay. Screenings, just wanted to give you an idea of how, again, special ed is growing. Screenings are initial evaluations for students to participate if at all possible. They're eligible for special ed, gave you a comparison from last year to this year, just so you see kind of what's going on. The total numbers of screenings that we actually did thus far, we have quite a few still remaining, sixty-nine of those sixty-nine, fifty-four were eligible for special ed, just to give you an idea of what's going on. This is data that's not as current as twenty eighteen, because when I did the report, twenty nineteen wasn't out. But I do have the twenty nineteen, because I've been booking every day, and it just came out. So if you do want to see that, I can incorporate it as well into this PowerPoint. But it hasn't changed that significantly. What I'm noticing, just so you know, the trend, the specific learning disability number has gone down to thirty-four. The emotional disability number has stayed static or positive at eighteen, and the autism number has went down like one to thirteen. So what we're seeing is the trend, more students need the, and less than specific learning disabilities. And then again, it's broken down by race, not seeing any significant changes with that breakdown either, as far as the number of schools with IEPs. We go to the next. Again, this is just showing you, in case you're curious, the percentage of students in a classroom environment. And again, separate facilities, the area doctors, and then private day, and then the actual general ed, and then actual time in a classroom, so you know, and that's the school, the district, we're the one. But if you look at other schools, our off-campus numbers are slightly higher than that of the state. And then, again, I just wrote it down, if you couldn't read the grid, it shows you just numerically what we're saying. Sometimes it's hard to read that. And then these are the things that we came out after doing the program evaluation, things that we thought we should just do a little bit better on, and we tried to do with the IDA funds and the DRS funds. Again, giving more supports in a non-varyous way to our students, especially, again, the emphasis for us has been on the social emotional, because we realize that if the, the San Jose thing for our kids, that we're saying more and more, we go to the next. And then the other was advancing the transition program a little bit more. And again, these are the things that were highlighted from the special ed review that was conducted. And then the things that we did find out about as a result of doing the actual program eval, we are compliant with our federal and state mandates for the IDA grant and also the DRS grant. We have developed a curriculum that fosters the integration of assessment tools administered by the transition specialists, the employment specialists, we actually go into the color academic strategies and actually have the teachers and do transition assessments, so we find out the stress that we do assess on our students. So we can hopefully guide them throughout their academic programming here better. So we know if you want to go into an art major or a mathematical major, then we try to make sure we have classes to go along with that. So we invested in monies through our IDA funding to support that. And the development of career college, this was an initiative that a group of our teachers went back to school to get degrees in transition, to become transition specialists, and this was their, like, thesis. And it really helped us out tremendously, because they actually did community college, which was phenomenal. We had a significant outpouring of parents, which, to be honest, one of the best things, I think. One, we've done many, but one of the really just outreach kind of activities that worked, because sometimes it's really difficult to get parents to come out, and their voice was really heard. And then as a result of that, we did start doing a career college here in the high school. And initially, we started off at maybe just a half of the students, and now we have over five hundred and fifty-six kids that attended last year. So it is working out. And they really get to see a wide variety of career colleges instead of just the college track. And the other thing is, we have students who have graduated, come back, and some of them are doing diverse careers. So it's really good for kids to see that, well, maybe college isn't for me, or maybe it's down the road. Mr. Williams has started employability workshops that he has, all of the kids, they're going to come there. They are in the auditorium, they're not just special ed kids, whoever would like to come. Again, we're trying to make sure our kids have employable work skills. Okay? I'll give so much. Another thing that we did, which is very huge, is D V T. Kenny, go for it.
Okay, I'm gonna take this slide, okay.
Go for it.
Um, what we've done is with the D V T, our social workers in the S E D program have, they've gone through a lot of training. And so what the biological behavior therapy is, is it gives students different choices and reactions to the behavior. Gives them various strategies that they can implement. It's a tight, an entire curriculum, and on our late arrival days, we've actually had a trainer come out to train the staff and how to implement this. And it's not an isolated thing, it's integrated into the S E D program in which our social workers, they set goals for students, students are aware of their goals, they participate, students give them feedback on how they, how they like the engagement, and it's therapy for the students, but it's, it's, it's not as clinical as if they're with their private therapist, but it provides them with an opportunity of therapy strategy to be utilized right in the same. So that has been one very well. We did gain parental permission to do that, since it was a shift in our program. So instead of the social workers providing social work services based on traditional models of how they group students in the past, this is a very direct therapy that they do with the students. There's needs assessment that they do ahead of time to see where each student is, and then they plan a therapy session based around the student's needs. Something else we incorporated, as one of the settings, is the therapy, and it's been a very exciting, a very exciting thing. When you have students who are non-verbal in our team program, who are really interactive, it's truly very huge for students who have sensory needs, but yet it gives them that balance of being able to participate. Music therapy is very talented, she's an animated, and students love it. The main thing about the music therapy is, she's also gearing her therapy toward the students' needs as well. So she's not just coming in with just, you know, music that she's heard off the radio. It's things that she's really looking for to help the students with, not only just their rhythm, but we do some coaching where our occupational therapist comes in at the same time, where the music therapist is there, and they're coaching in areas. So it's really focused on the students' high P needs as well as an enjoyable time for them. The last thing on the slide is, we've done something very innovative with our social work services. I'm housed in two ninety-eight, which is where the psychology and social worker that I house as well. And so what we've done is, the traditional model has just been to provide social work services for students based upon their IEP needs, based upon our field schedule. So what I mean by that is, we looked at when students had strategies or study hall. And so we said, that's the time we're going to see them. That wasn't necessarily the best way to group students. So what we did was, we went to an innovative approach, where we did screeners, we did needs assessments. And we're not basing, seeing the students upon what's convenient in their schedule. We're looking at their needs and we're grouping them together. And so it's an innovative approach. They have services based upon their IEP needs, and it's not every week. And so what it does for the students is, it provides them their services, and it also allows them the opportunity to not miss so much of their classes. They're still getting all of their minutes in, we front load, so we make certain that we are needing the IEP minutes, but we do it in an innovative way. So now students are not just in a group because that's what was convenient on your schedule at that time. You're in a group because all of those students in that group have very similar needs.
All right. Keep going. Um, Rebecca, you go for recommendations, you ended up.
You go ahead, you're going out with a bang, this is it.
All right, recommendations. I think that we need to improve our utilization of the data. Because when we prepared for this, I was like, oh, I didn't realize we had this data source or that data source. But just to actually start using, using those data resources more, instead of at the end like right now, as far as doing the program eval, it would be good to use the data to, I guess, to start at the beginning of what we need to spend more money on or areas. Examine, examine professional development, with more outcome of base measures, again, that's dealing with the data. We know we're at a deficit, but trying to figure out where we want to go with our outcomes. Again, improving this relationship with the DRS staff. I think I've learned so much more about DRS just because we have a new person, so I had to kind of learn additional information as well. And I found out, wow, there are a lot more resources than the traditional ones that we have been using. For example, there are college funding for students as well. And I'm like, okay, this is something our parents need to know about, and we need to figure that out. Again, just more monies, like, for, for kids to use, and they were like, oh, yeah, we have this. And I, I want to know, like, again, build those relationships. And then again, just developing and maintaining relationships with our local businesses. I think we're good at it, but I think we could do even better as far as programming. Okay, and I think that's it. And continue to increase the DRS, IRS outcomes, because the more outcomes, the more money that we receive. I know it's very nifty, but we wanted to be as detailed as possible. Questions?
So I have a couple of different questions here. The first is, when you talked about DRS enrollment, you said it's very much dependent on the person. And so the person that was doing it, did that person leave unexpectedly or planned?
It was unexpected.
Okay, so we had to kind of fill with the gap.
Quickly.
Okay. And my second question is, in, in the note, in the questions, there was reference, two, this is a two-parter. There's reference to transfers from neighboring districts, our public and private schools?
Yes.
And then I'm going to kind of lump that with the reference to, we do have a very, a high. And then I'm gonna kind of lump that with the reference to, we do have a very, a high number of students with, with outside placement?
Yes.
Is there, you know, can you talk to those too, do you know why?
As far as the increase in special ed in general, I think we are seeing students with much more significant emotional needs. And as far as students transferring in, many of the schools that we are currently attending, be it public or private, they don't have the emotional supports in place. And many of our neighboring private schools, what I'm saying is that those students are op-arc and real forest residents. However, the school's sad to say, will let them know, we cannot meet your needs and you no longer can be here. They have that option at a private school. So as a result of that, they come to their home school, and that's us. So then we have to address their needs. And that is a trend that I'm seeing. Again, I'm also seeing a trend that some of the public school transfers are coming in as well due to, and again, I don't know why they necessarily are coming in, but I am seeing a trend with that as well. So I don't know if I've answered your two questions, Erica.
Thank you.
Quite well.
I was thinking, you could just speak to the inclusion specialist?
No.
To that position, how that's going, and I don't think I saw that person in the list of faculty, so is that not?
She lives under a teacher. The library freezes from last year to the next. She is doing a phenomenal job in that position. Again, it was a position where you had to kind of hit the ground and run and keep running, to be very honest. She has made great gains as far as individualized supports and general classes for our students. In addition to that, I think, I don't remember what, I think it was the last report with the strategic plan, we had included some of the things that she had done in that report. As far as special Olympics, as far as parent nights, we actually had a movie, it was an excellent movie night for parents to come out. And as far as meeting with parents, some of them on a weekly basis, keeping us out of, to be very honest, some perhaps with a teacher situation, as far as really coming up with creative ways to accommodate and meet the needs. Dr. Dixon, would you want us?
Yeah, I just wanted to share, I shared a suite with her, we refer to it as a suite, it's just a place where it's a lot of us, a place, and it just feels like home. Her office, actually, I could look right out of my office and see her working. And one thing that she does is she also provides us with a schedule every week. So it lets us know which students she services, it lets us know, additionally, students, she also meets with teachers during the planning periods. And what she's doing with teachers at that time is she's giving resources to work with students in class, she's coming into classrooms, she's modeling various components of the lesson, where she's giving, she gives the teachers the paper version of things, but then she also comes in and models various portions. She does a lot of follow-up, parents and client meetings, she has weekly meetings in-person, she has weekly phone calls. And one thing that she's also doing a great deal of is, she's working with our parent professionals as well. When she goes into the classroom, she's observing the parent professionals, she's giving them strategies of how to work with the students. She's also helping our parent professionals to understand the components of the IEP that applies most to their job every day, which is the data collection and how they are supporting students as well. So she's really, you know, she's really doing a great job. You know, we always have room for improvement in, in anything that you do.
That's good, good, it was the first year.
Right, but she's really working very hard. And again, as I, as I said, she provides us with the schedule every week, the students that she's working with, the teachers that she's working with, and just copies of various resources and links and materials. She's developed a newsletter to keep everybody just on the same page of things that are exciting and doing on our department.
As far as the grants go, the parent needs that we have, that she has created, that comes out as, out of, we pay for, like, the movie, we pay with IDA grant money for parents to come and observe that.
Was it intended that her, initially that her role be sort of a touch point for parents? Because it seems like that, I mean, so, full disclosure, we have a student and a teen program, and Mr. Renz has really become sort of a touch point for, for the parents in terms of, you know, learning what's going on just in general with the student, Ms. F. So is that, was that intended as part of the role, or is that just sort of grown organically out of?
It depends.
Because she can't get it so much.
It depends, because every teacher is a case manager as well. So in her role of being an inclusion facilitator, she also carries a case management role. So if she's the case manager for a student.
Yeah, I'm not sure she is for us, but.
So there's a lot of, that's her role as well, as a case manager, to be that, that person of contact for parents.
Yeah, she's, I mean, so many, you know, it's fantastic. I can tell you, phenomenal job. And she truly believes, and as you will, if you don't know by now, especially at teachers, it's a call. It is, thank you, it, it is. It's kind of a mission for many of us in the field. It's not just a job, and with her, it truly is. And she definitely goes well beyond the requirements of the job. And I am stoked on this. And thank you again for approving that position. And many of the, to be honest, of many of the really good things that we do, and I do think that's perhaps why many parents move in the community as a special ed, but we could not have done it without the support of you guys at the foretaker. Even though I know I beat you guys up sometimes and always ask for money, but we truly could not do it, and truly as a community member. That is why, for me personally, I moved to Op-arc, and that's why we don't mind paying the taxpayer. So thank you all again, because we could not do it without your support. And I tell all of our parents that as well, truly, so thank you.
I think Craig, Gina?
Sure, my question is short. Thank you for the presentation and the answer to the questions. In the, and I think it's sort of a follow-up on Tom's question, on the, the growth in the, in the demand for services. It would be, I think it would be good going forward to take a little bit, to get a little bit more data on where that's coming from. I appreciate your anecdotal comments, but this is significant growth, and these are significant costs, and we need to understand what's, what's causing them, both from a cost side standpoint, and is there anything that we could be intervening with in a different way than we are as well?
Let me just clarify what you're asking, because see, that's another presentation. And this was just tonight to really deal with the DRS and the IDA grant. So I didn't go into detail on that information as far as the increase in the enrollment, because I agree, it's definitely more involved in the anecdotal information. Now, I can get that if you would not, if it weren't a problem, but that was not our intent tonight.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I know the conversations that we're having nationally and statewide about the increase in special ed services, specifically around social emotional learning needs. And I'm curious, two things, one is, not a numbers question, but I know that there's an increase in the, in the needs, and I'm curious, this is just identified, students with five oh fours and IEPs, this is not the full spectrum of students that have social emotional needs that are not being met? Because just as an educator, and then what we're seeing across the country is, there is such an increase. So I'm curious, two things, do you feel like you have what you need to be able to meet that increased need, which we know is increasing every year? And then also, that position that Sarah was asking about, do you feel like it would be beneficial to have another person in a similar position, doing similar work, like, would that be?
I'll answer the first question first. As far as the social emotional needs, I think the board knows quite well how I stand with that position, because a couple years back, I was trying to begin a full-time position for the social emotional needs of our students. I don't think we have enough staff to address the needs for, on a full-time basis. And I think what happens is that special ed becomes the asset to many of those students' needs. So I think that we are trying to accommodate that. We are making enroll, but we're not there yet. I think the things we are doing with restored justice is a plus. I think the idea that we're trying to figure out more multi-tiered support for students, but I do think we need to do a better job at that, because we are seeing significant emotional concerns. And what happens is, we get to students usually around their junior year. And perhaps we could have, and I don't know, we perhaps could have done more to address that sooner. And then I look at the data, for example, with our SLD students, we used to see an increase in students with specific learning disabilities, the number of kids going in, but now what I'm seeing is that number is going down. But we have academic supports in place to address their needs in reading math, history, English. And I think there is a correlation there, and again, I would have to investigate, because it is all informal. But I think if we had a little bit more to address some of the social emotional needs, maybe, and just so maybe, we would see less students coming our way. I still think we still have quite a few, but at least we would have more universal screeners or something in place to address those.
I believe there is a hope too, that with the new grant, through the Rockefeller Center and NOLA, that's in collaboration with the Echo Center, the collaboration with China at D ninety, D ninety-seven, that it will begin to be the, build a framework for systemic support.
Yes.
So that it's not just happening when it reaches the high school, because that's one of the things I've heard routinely is, we get kids who have no designation, no diagnosis, and then midway through sophomore, junior year, they're referred for special needs services. And we are seeing an increase, we talked about that, not just here, but superintendents have had the conversation, there's so, there's a growing, growing population of students with severe mental health issues.
Can, can I ask one thing, to that point? Is, I'm sorry, I'm so tired tonight, my brain is leaving me. The need for additional social emotional pieces, like, I love that you mentioned the distorted part and how that can impact it. When you provide us data, will you, will you also include some comparisons of like trends that are happening, like, similar districts? Because I know that he asked him to some of that, so. If, since we get to request another report from you before you're gone, if that's what we're doing.
Not as well as this.
Yeah, I would just love to see, I would love to see, I, I know personally, the experiences of being in a school system and seeing these increases specifically around social emotional pieces and being unidentified. And then the other question is about connection to the D nine, D ninety-seven, and like conversations about what they're seeing as trends as well, and how that's moving into our district up here, so. If there's any information about that, that would be useful as well.
We do have a lot of different needs, and sometimes, especially now that we're doing transition needs, and they will access to sit there, when they get the kids that are on for a research, to, sad to say, we have to go get more expertise. But I think sad to say, again, they're starting to see this too, trend. Because they have never invited us to actually come and sit there, meaning this, I won't say the last two years, they're like, can you help get?
Something else that we're doing with that too, we form something called collaborative wellness work here, and that consists of myself, that consists of Lisa DiVio from the Op-arc Mental Health Commission, individuals from the Little Forest Community Health Commission as well. And so we meet about once a month, we present at the parent university back in November, and so with Chris Johnson, we have other staff members, I don't name it, Chris Johnson, Lucy, Asanda Jackson, myself. And so the focus is on mental health. And so what this group is doing is, instead of us operating in silos where the high school is here, the middle schools are here, Lisa DiVio brings everything that's happening in those districts here. And so the grants that you all have spoken about and that, she shares that with us so that we can begin to align our efforts here at the high school, so that we can cut down on those surprises that we receive, and we find ourselves equipped to deal with some of those surprises that come. So we're working more collaboratively, doing more community kinds of things together through our, we have another parent university, Shamus Plug coming up in April. And so this is our opportunity to bring these districts in the community together, because we've been operating very much in silos, and so it's been very good for us. We stay very well aware of what's going on in ninety, what's going on in D ninety-seven, and those individuals sitting at the table with us once a month.
So are there people from ninety, ninety-seven that are a part of this community?
There are not people there, but because Lisa is very, very much involved in what they do, she brings us back the reports and different things that they're doing in those districts, as well as inviting us to various things that they're doing as well.
Oh, I mean, to Gina's point, I think it would be, you know, if, if that is a way to truly have everyone at the table to, to inform and understand trends, if that is, if that's possible, to have folks from ninety, ninety-seven sit, you know, and not kind of firsthand information, and also sharing, you know, sharing information.
I can put that on as an agenda item. We have a scheduled in-person meeting coming up next week to finalize some things for our upcoming parent university. So we meet during the school day right now, so potentially as an agenda item to maybe have an evening. I know it's difficult because parents work and there's a lot of different things going on. If maybe I'll bring that to the committee to see if they will be open to at least once a quarter, an evening meeting, so that those partners can sit at the table with us as well, so we're not just receiving the reports, receiving reports of what they're doing, but to your point, to actually have them at the table.
Or could be during, I mean, during the day, but if it's during the day, that could be one of their needs, and maybe more convenience for them to.
I'll present that as an agenda item.
I would imagine during the day as opposed to.
Yes, because we meet during, we meet during the day. Typically, our meetings are on Fridays, because that's the day that we don't have heavy load, especially at Saturday, so it's a little bit more vulnerability for me on this day. So I'll bring it, because I'm gonna do the item and then let them get me the follow-up.
I just, in many ways, as we, as we talk about data sharing and agreements, in many ways, enrolls we can have to partner with our bigger districts. I think it's, makes it easier to.
I think they're receptive.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, they are, because we're meeting now, the social workers, we're talking to a big plus. So we are better prepared to do some of the issues that are coming.
Okay. Matt, I'll let you have the comment.
Thanks, I have a few questions, comments, praise. So I've been hearing great things about the Department of Strategic Affairs on the board, and so a few things, I guess my comments first, and then I'll quote a question. So one comment is, I know, it was, I think, three years ago, two and a half years ago, when we had a Tradition of Excellence recipient who was formerly a school refusal individual, and inspiring story about how he was able to work through his challenges and then go on to great success as a writer for Stephen Colbert, et cetera. So to the degree that we can ensure that future honorees, or at least nominees, are drawn from the pool of those who have been in this room, I think it's so important for all students to see themselves represented on the stage in success. And so that was inspiring to see, because I, I, I don't think I was able to see him talk, I heard, I had lunch with him afterwards in this room, and he was talking about how he just really dreaded school, and understated the case. And I think that is so inspiring, because he got through it despite that. And so I think that's so important from a relatability standpoint. And so I know Tom has been on the committee before that, and I think I see for Tom to just really make sure that we are starting to draw from that pool of alumni. Also, one thing I've learned in my time on the board is that there's a lot of reimbursement that happens. So this is a very labor-intensive effort, and it can seem like, wow, this is really expensive per capita, but that we expend, but then we also get back state and federal dollars. And so, not right now, but in general, I think it's important for us to just continually be reliant with the community of what is the net, you know, of all that, so that people understand. This is a great ROI that we're striving for. Um, this is a great ROI that we're striving for. Um, so I'm getting close to the question part. Oh, so comment slash question is these employers in the community, um, I'd love to have ways of recognizing them and reinforcing what they're doing and then helping encourage other companies to get on board with that through that recognition and acknowledgement. So just, um, not necessarily now, but at some point, whether it's to honor them here in the board.
We do, we do.
Okay, excellent, all right.
We have a, oh, uh, wonderful lunch, and they get a kick out of it. And then you guys are going to get a little good bag. And we put this in there and pop, store windows to let it go and does a thing.
Excellent, okay, good. I didn't see your playbook, and so, all right.
She was holding out.
And, um, there's another, the, um, other aspect that may or may not be for tonight, but just in general, with the freshman curriculum restructuring and questions about what does that entail for all students? To what degree will this affect what you're doing and students? Because I know that it's not just one homogenous script, there's varying degrees of needs that are being met through your efforts. And so I think whether we can really talk about and how this may or may not incorporate some of those students is important, so we all understand that. And so I just want to put that out there just from a communication standpoint. And that's about it, so thank you very much. I didn't have much more to add, just want to thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you guys. I want to hand these. I want to pass them. And I'll give you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Check out the phone. That's how we do it in special needs.
So we're, we're going to move, uh, the first item in finance. We're going to do a switch, and we're going to go to the stipend review committee recommendations. So, um, this item is being presented by Susan Johnson, Jason Lee, and Dr. Ron Sanders. I guess that's starting to understand that. Um, as you know, the stipend, we, we know that this will be the first time for two of our board members going through this report. Um, and we're prepared to answer any questions that you have. But this is, um, the recommendation for the twenty, these twenty, 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 twenty-one school year stipends. Uh, at the conclusion of the presentation, it is recommended that we move the item, uh, for approval of the additional stipend in the amount of four thousand eighty-six dollars for the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year at the regular board meeting of March nineteenth, twenty twenty. This item is in compliance with priority, I think Jason Lee was coming up, I'm sorry. Uh, strategic priority four and two, four code one, and district policy six, code one ninety. Ladies.
Hello, right? So, uh, each year the stipend committee gets together, it's a combination of three administrators and three faculty members. Um, and we need to review applications, uh, for pilot clubs to become official and for any additional stipends, um, that existing clubs are asking for. Uh, that's usually like an increase in stipend or an additional, you want to add it to the club. Uh, the stipend committee this year is recommending to add three new official clubs. Uh, that increase is about, uh, five thousand eighty-six dollars and a stipend level change for one current club. We've also, uh, removed, uh, three current stipends. Um, one is a club that's no longer, uh, having student attendance. Another, uh, another one is a stipend that's no longer being used. And then the third one is a graduation stipend, um, for wardrobe game that we don't need anymore. Any questions about this?
I had one question I didn't see answered about the, uh, the clubs that were not approved for, uh, additional stipend amounts. Their request, just what their current level and stipend amounts are.
The ones that we declined, uh, for additional stipends was our best studies. Um, right now they have a level four and a level five stipend level. Uh, they were asking for another level four stipend. Um, the science Olympiad, they received a stipend increase last year, so they went from a level six to a level five. And they were looking for a second level five this year. And then our special Olympics, which is one of our athletic groups, uh, they were asking for an increase in stipend. I can't remember specifically what their levels of stipends are. Um, because it's not on my records.
And then, uh, spoken word was another one?
Oh, spoken word, it's on the next page. Um, spoken word right now has a level four, a level, uh, two level fives.
So are the clubs, um, I'm just trying to understand when their, the requests are made. What, I mean, I'm sure there's a rubric or something, I'm just trying to understand, you know, now we talk about the having a pilot and the sustainability of the club. And so how are those determinations made? Or even, um, if you put in a request, what, how do you, what information do you have to put forward to show that, for that meeting?
Um, so we ask that they include participation data. So students, um, they keep attendance records from each meeting, uh, shows which students are meeting. And then, uh, we ask for how often they're meeting, how much time that they're spending with students. Um, and, uh, things like events or showcases or programs that are there.
So when the information is provided to the clubs, I'm assuming that it's more than, uh, what we were told in the memo that, you know, at this time, the committee doesn't see a need for an increase? That there's some?
Yes. There's a.
I said that when we talked to her. No, it was just, it was confusing to try to, to understand what, how those determinations make.
That was, yeah, my question was like, is there a rubric for determining, um, like, who gets a stipend and who doesn't get a stipend increase? Like, what, is there like a typical, you know, I'm just, is there a rubric?
Yes, uh, there's a number of criteria that we look at. Uh, so it's a student experience based on, uh, the student attendance. So, uh, for example, the clubs that have that increase in number of students, they might require an additional sponsor eventually, an external, uh, that initiate, uh, having an additional stipend.
Yeah, I have a question and, um, a, a, a request. Uh, my question is, as you talked about, you know, some of the changes being recommended from a process standpoint. So you mentioned two specific ones that are on the not to continue. One was graduation and one was a club that didn't have attendance.
Mm-hmm.
So are they current stipends or, or, you know, today that are being awarded even though we're not?
Those stipends will be issued this year. So they are stipends, they are stipends that were not given this year.
So, okay, so, and we're, you're just formalizing that, that, okay.
Yeah, they were budgeted, but, uh.
Budgeted, but, but because the need wasn't there, they, we.
They weren't issued, yes.
Okay. My, my request is, um, what would be of, of interest is, um, as we look at the stipends, who is, you know, we have a distribution to say how much of, of our stipend is, is being met by faculty, by other people in the building, or people from out far. So anything that, that will just kind of tell us whether we're, you know, we have the resources to fill the stipend and how we're dealing with that, so. I think it might be in the report, but.
It's in the participation report we put out, uh, at the beginning of every year. So I think we present that in August each year. And that did drop down that way.
Right, I think Gail's pulled it up now, and she's already sent it out.
There is a piece to that, that I think was reported, was requested that has to do with how many, what our policy is about, how many, uh, sponsors one person can have. How many sponsorship, how many stipends can one person have? So a breakdown of that as well from our staff.
I don't believe we have any restriction, uh, on how many stipends. It's just, you know, it is, what we have is a posting process, and people have to interview for how different stipend counts available.
So we, so it's potential that someone could have five, ten?
It, it's potential, I don't believe we have any legal assistance.
I think, I, we should understand what our policy.
We, we don't have it specified in the policy, no specific restriction on the number of stipends.
However, we have had some conversations where there's one person who may have a position that kind of overlaps. I would, if I was a teacher who taught, who had a club that was on creative basket weaving, and then I would come out of creative basket weaving and go right into straw doll, straw, straw dial making with the wicker left floating, through creative basket weaving. Versus clocking in for that and then clocking out, and then clocking in for the other and clocking out. There's been some cursory conversation about how that's just one position that deals with straw. That's just an example. I'm still trying to accent this, you know, because she knows what I'm talking about.
This is allegory.
So, so what you're saying is that some things that are counted as two could potentially just be one.
Yes.
Because it's the same.
They're really, yes.
And the kids are on two sides of the same room.
And sometimes it's the same kid. That we could possibly look at how, and like I said, we just had some cursory level conversation about how we can look at that and say, well, maybe this is one position, and instead of this stipend, you get like this stipend. You're still doing two, two different things, but maybe doing it that way versus this is a stipend for the mouse and this is a stipend for the pen.
So it's tiny percentage of the stipends really takes.
So, yes, so there's quite.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we maintain attendance, uh, so we do keep records in scholarly attendance for each club. So it's, it doesn't mean that one year you have a stipend and students start coming and you will automatically.
Oh, no, no, I understand that. I'm, I'm just saying in terms of the distribution of staff, to Tom's point, but then also to, you know, making sure the unduplicated as well as, you know, how many are, is the same person or, you know, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
And I put in a request, and that's, it was triggered by looking at the new clubs, the, the demographics. And, uh, seeing the small percentages of students of color that are in the new clubs. And just, like we had talked about with the report from, um, August, having a breakdown of, of the data by, um, race and gender. So I think this makes that, plus to me, more, what we're, how we're doing well, but how, what kids are we, um, attracting with our, our newer clubs as well as the ones that are always staying.
And this is, this is three of the, of the newer clubs out of the, and so across the board, uh, we're going to start looking at that data from this year to see if there's changes in what some of the things we've done.
Um, so I have like a, a question that's sort of, two, maybe two or three separate questions. Once the faculty or whomever might be selected to receive a stipend, are they then sort of forever in that stipend position? Or do they have to re-interview every year? Or is there any sort of evaluation process around how they're doing as a sponsor? Or is there any feedbacks listed from students about how the sponsor is interacting and providing a club?
I evaluate the sponsors from year to year, um, and so we have a conversation with them. They can continue as long as they're, obviously doing have, if they're shadowed by, I mean, if they're required of it. Um, but they're valued and looked at from year to year. They don't have to re-apply as long as they, uh, do a good job.
Standing.
Um, I do want to note, so, I'm like that, and it may not be what you were saying, but, but click for me. Um, the stipends we're talking about today are strictly the club's stipends. There's another stipend report that is athletics. I just wanted to make sure we were not mixing this up.
Yeah. Yeah, is there any feedback ever submitted from students to kind of see how the club's going?
Every, every so often, it's not done annually. Um, it is one of the things that's going to be going this year, because we're doing kind of an overall audit of the program. So it's one of the things that we need to do this year.
Any other questions?
Why didn't the athletics stipends come up?
Well, there, there wasn't any additional athletic stipends or stipend changes this year. So that's why there's, you know, athletics in this report.
Okay.
Um, but to speak to the evaluation process, John does those evaluations that are here without me too. So, you don't hear how to read it. She really coached you, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is, uh, the educational technology vendor for firewall licensing. And coming forth is Cindy Sidor, Chief School Business Official, Chris Payne, Senior Director of Educational Technology, and I'm a Director of Infrastructure Services. At the conclusion of this presentation, it is recommended that this item be brought forward to the Board of Education. Um, for firewall licensing, licensing for Speedlink totaling nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we moved forward for approval at the Board of Education meeting scheduled for March the nineteenth. This item is in compliance with strategic plan priority four and board policy four, code ten.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this is, uh, one of three items that we're bringing, uh, as part of the E-Rate process that we do every year in order to secure a reimbursement percentage on our cost for hardware infrastructure pieces. And this is specific, uh, to the licensing on the firewall.
Just, so where do you get your product warranties on the hardware and software?
Uh, that comes through the vendor. So for instance, on this, it's a licensing, so there's not a warranty per se. But on items where you have hardware involved, um, it would be.
Although, for a software license, where you will have fitness or a particular purpose that is, you know, hasn't had downtime of over X, Y, or Z, I mean, that's certainly pretty standard in a licensing agreement. So I was just, there are no reps or warranties in any of the contractual work here. And, and they say that if there's anything that's provided by CDW somewhere else online or purchase order that's different than what's in here, it goes away. So, uh, I, I'm just wondering if we, if we have any, any rights to go after manufacturers or suppliers of the underlying software if there's a problem at.
I got you, so you're looking for additional liability language that you would submit.
A warranty, I would just understand how it gets, there, it might just be a flow-through. And they, and these guys might just be a conduit. I mean, I don't even know how, but I'm guessing they're a conduit for most of the product.
Yeah, I would assume that that would rest on, so for instance, when we purchase the Palo Alto firewall itself, that that warranty would rest on the device itself. But I see your point, I mean, if there's a way of, of making sure that that's carried through the licensing.
Just to make sure you have that right, okay?
Yeah, we'll get to that. Um, we are, uh, just to, so you know, we've got a, a limited timeframe, and we are structured to a timeframe E-Rate. It's a tough one, just in order to get that discount, it has to get anybody deadline, it has to be submitted by deadline. But we're going to follow through on that soon.
Yes. Uh, yeah, my question is, what qualifies this for board approval?
Uh, the fact that there's a contract involved in, uh, the E-Rate, um, process. So it's not simply a purchase of it, but the E-Rate component requires an E-Rate contract that's, that's along with the other pieces that's in that packet. Because that requires signature, requires board approval. I've checked in with multiple districts on this process and with our E-Rate consultant. that's the answer that we received.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is the presentation of educational technology vendor for network hardware and licensing purchase. At the conclusion of this presentation, it is recommended that, uh, the item move forward for the purchase of network hardware and licensing totaling fifty-four thousand two hundred and nine dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We moved forward to the March nineteenth Board of Education meeting. This item is also in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and District Policy Four, Code Ten.
And I hope this format is working out to make it a little clearer. I know that when we brought E-Rate last year, it was kind of compiling them with documents and hard, made it hard to break up. So the fact that we've got three vendors here, uh, we broke this up into three items, so I, I hope that adds some clarity to it. Essentially what we're, uh, what we've got presented here is, um, our, uh, our licensing is associated with network hardware and our, uh, switches that we're purchasing. Um, so that's what's built into this. Is there anything else missing on that? Okay, so that's what we've got baked into this portion of this. This is switch hardware and the associated licensing that goes along with it.
Here's a quick question. The next item is the presentation of educational technology vendor for network hardware installation. And at the conclusion of this presentation, it is recommended that the item move forward for the purchase of installation and configuration services for, from E2 totaling forty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We move to the regular Board of Education meeting on March nineteenth. This is in compliance with Strategic Plan Priority Four and Board Policy Four, Code Ten.
So this portion, um, that, uh, E2 and CDW both put in a proposal for, um, the hardware portion of it, um, and CDW had a better price on the hardware, but E2 had a installation solution that was, uh, feasible, that gave it a good price, and that's what we're presenting here. That's why those are broken out. So this portion is the installation of the wireless access points that give us wireless access in the, in the different locations, replacement on, uh, a hundred and seventy-two of those. And then the configuration of those and the configuration of our switches to work along with them. So that's what this stipend is.
Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
We now move to the policy section. We'll bring you back to verse three, um, policy two, code, um, one oh five, ethics and gift ban. Um, the language that was the question. The language that was in, uh, question before was tied to the statement where it says the superintendent shall appoint a qualified outside investigator, but this is tied to investigation to sexual harassment against, uh, complaint against a board member. And I think the concern was that the language had not been officially changed in the document and Francis indicated that once it's gone through the board, it will change it.
Yes, and this, on this screen, you will see the actual change made now.
Right, there's a structure and board president and shows the superintendent and it's down to the bottom of the page and it now reads the superintendent shall appoint a qualified outside investigator who's not a district employee. Right. Okay, we're at future agenda items.
Actually, just based on tonight's discussion, I, I might like to hear about our program on embedding social, emotional, and gender and how well that's being done to, to see if we can understand that and see if maybe we can identify a way to beef that up to reduce cases or identify cases or that kind of thing.
Okay. And I think, uh, perhaps connected with that is the request that was a part of, of their presentation that talked about the need for more data analysis. And I think that is the connection of how our PSS teams are working on this.
I don't know if that's there. Two, three, I mean. I have to lose. I know the, um, next week we have the MTSS. The PSS team, I'll have to see when that's. Okay. So I, uh, move to the third.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.